Welcome to Longleaf tonight. We're going to call the meeting to order. We did not mean executive session tonight, but we're starting right off in public session for the August 13th meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask Ms. Brill to deliver our moment of silence and inspirational moment with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand?
Before we have a moment of silence, I wanted to remember the families who've lost loved ones recently. Our dearly beloved Lottie Chisholm, her husband passed away recently, Dr. Andrew Chisholm. And also certainly Dr. Bill Fleming lost his brother, and Mrs. Specter lost her mother recently. And also the family of Gabby Swanson. She was a rich view cheerleader, and my understanding is their memorial service will be held for her on Sunday, and a candlelight vigil will be held on Wednesday in Elgin. So remember these folks in your prayers and...
Chip's Uncle Joe.
And Chip's Uncle Joe. That's right. Thank you, Melinda. I understand that Chip was...played a huge part in his life, and want to remember everyone who's had a sadness, and if you would bow your head for a moment of silence.
Say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States shall declare and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Okay, this time, item three is approval of the current agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jackson, any second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Manning. Thank you very much. You announce the vote. The next item, number four, is our consent agenda, which accrues approval of our agenda, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, budget update, student readmission requests, and ratification of personnel. Is there any discussion on these items or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any discussion, further discussion?
Mr. Chair, the page you handed out, was that an amendment or part of the actual...
It was actually part of the...it was in the...
Okay, okay.
Oh, no, I thought it was separate.
No, it's in the electronic.
Oh, well, I withdraw my motion.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So approve, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, you have a motion.
A second.
Okay. Okay, all those of the vote, ready to vote on the consent agenda? Go ahead and vote. Actually, Mr. Jackson actually made the motion, but we'll incorrect that later, okay? Yep. Okay, passed six to one vote for the consent agenda.
Are we voting on Melinda's motion or Chip's? Which one are we voting on?
Voting on Chip's. I withdrew my motion.
She got Kevin Jackson, Susan Brill.
But I think she's trying to get an understanding of what she was voting on.
Consent agenda.
What am I voting on, Melinda's motion or Chip's? Then I need to change my vote.
See, when you passed it, I confused everybody.
The motion was the same. She just said she wasn't going to do it.
See, I didn't know all that was included. I thought that was separate.
Yeah, that's when I handed it out, I said this was included.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, four, two. Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Hamfrennan, please.
Yes, it's with great pleasure that I announce our new chief financial officer, Dr. Harry Miley, if you would stand up. You may recognize his name. He's known statewide as an expert on financial issues, and has his own firm, Owner Miley and Associates, where he has done extensive work assisting government as well as educational organizations. He served as the chairman of the Board of Economic Advisors for eight years under two governors. He was a senior economist for the Board, the Budget and Control Board, for five years, and we are fortunate to have him now as a member of our Richland Two team. Welcome, Dr. Miley.
Dr. Miley, would you like to say a word?
All I can say is thank you. I'm looking forward to working with a great district and with a great board and staff. I have some heavy, big shoes to fill, I know. I'm going to do my best with a lot of help from the staff and administration and the board, so I look forward to working with them.
If I may, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Miley is a friend and a colleague, and we have worked together over the years on a number of statewide projects, and I'll just say, Harry, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mark.
Item five tonight is special recognitions. Dr. Ham, I'm going to turn it over to you. Who's in charge?
And actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Blackstone.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Ham and staff. Tonight, we'd like to present the flags and certificates to eighteen Richland Two schools and centers that earned twenty-three Palmetto Gold and Silver Awards for general performance and closing the achievement gap for the 2012-2013 school year. Four of them, Bethel Hanbury Bridge Creek, Lake Carolina Elementary Schools, Blythewood Middle School, all received both the Palmetto Gold awards in both categories, I should say. So I'm going to call up the representatives from each school to come in alphabetical order, so if, once I call your name, and if you know that you're going to be coming up next, then why don't you just kind of get in line and come up, and we have the flags and the certificates from the State Department of Education to present to you. So with that, I'm going to ask Jeff Williams from Bethel Hanbury Elementary School, again who received the gold in both categories, to come forward and receive your flag and certificates and take a quick picture. Blythewood High School received gold in the general performance category and is represented Blythewood Middle School received gold in both categories, and Dr. Brenda Hafner, would you please come forward?
And guess.
And guess. Bookman Road Elementary School received gold in the general performance category and is represented by Principal Kendra James. And to round out the Bs, we have Bridge Creek Elementary, who received gold in both categories and is represented by Principal Kristen Eubanks. Center for Knowledge received gold in the general performance category and is represented by Principal Dr. Jo Lane Hall. No, I'm sorry?
Ah!
I'm looking this time before I say it. Forest Lake Elementary School receives silver in the closing the achievement gap category and is represented by Principal Dr. Cappy Steck and...
Dr. Bozier.
Dr. Bozier. Killian Elementary School receives silver in the closing the achievement gap category, and here to receive his flag is Dr. Robert Scotland.
I'm so sorry. I accidentally grabbed several that were getting lost.
We will make sure everybody leaves with the right flag. Lake Carolina Elementary received gold in both categories and is represented by Dr. Andrea Berry, Principal, and her team. Langford Elementary receives silver in the general performance category and is represented by Principal Cassina Jackson. Nelson Elementary School receives silver in the general performance category, and here to receive her flag is Karen Beaman, Principal. Polo Road Elementary School receives silver in the general performance category and is represented by Principal Dr. Marshall Lynn Franklin. Pontiac Elementary receives silver in the closing the achievement gap category and is represented by both current Principal Katie Barber and former Principal Beth Elliott. Assistant Principal Jennifer Gillespie. Rice Creek Elementary received gold in the closing the achievement gap category and is represented by Principal Sean Biston and team. Round Top Elementary received gold in the general performance category, and here to accept the award is Principal Janine Tucker. Sandlapper Elementary receives silver in the general performance category and gold in the closing achievement gap category, and Principal Linda Hall is here. Spring Valley High received gold in the general performance category, and here to accept his flag is Dr. Baron Davis. And the Center for Inquiry is last but not least, and they received the gold in the general performance category, and they are represented here tonight by...I know Dr. Lynn Mueller said she wasn't going to be able to make it, I'm not sure if they represented...
I think their whole staff is on a retreat to get ready for the new school year.
Well, we'll make sure that we get them their flag and certificate. So let's have another round of applause for all of them. We do have one more recognition today, and that is for Forest Lake Elementary School. Their technology magnet school was being, for being featured in a recent issue of the USA Today Magazine. You see the cover of it, and now, well, there's the cover. Okay, we'll go back, back to the, this is the inside article that spotlighted the school's use of technology in the classroom. And I know that that might be a little bit difficult to see, but, and I'm not sure whether it's even been published yet, but I'm sure you'll be able to find this online, but it's a really neat picture and some graphics about what the modern classroom looks like, and it takes me back to images of the classroom of the future back at Killian Elementary School. Well, that was back in ninety-eight or something like that. So we've come a long way, and I'd like for Principal Dr. Cappy Steck to come up, to be recognized for being featured in that publication. Okay, well, that is our recognitions for tonight, and now, Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to turn it over to Sue Mallett for our Student Learning Focus.
Thank you, Ken. Our teachers worked really hard this summer, and you're going to hear some of the opportunities that they had a little bit later, but our teachers did some unusual kinds of things as well. And so we're delighted to have Dr. Charles Vaughn, social studies teacher from Richland Northeast, who's going to come forward and share his experience in Amsterdam, the Netherlands, and he has brought back many, many opportunities and strategies for our teachers, so we're delighted. This was a partnership among several different organizations, so welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board of Trustees. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to be able to tell you a little bit about what I did this summer related to professional development. I'd also like to thank Dr. Ham, Ms. Mallett, and Ms. Gregory for inviting me to make this brief presentation. For geographers, it's all about place, so I have a map there. And as I suspect that you may have experienced at some point in your life, historians are not known for their brevity, so I'm going to try to make this quick. Although, over dinner the other night, it stretched out for a long time. So during my month I spent in Europe, I visited several different places in the United Kingdom. I visited the Mary Rose Museum, which houses artifacts from the Mary Rose, which was a flagship of Henry VIII. Visited the Bayou Tapestry, Mont Saint Michel, the D-Day beaches, particularly Omaha Cemetery, Omaha Beach Cemetery, and a neighborhood in Berlin that was divided by the Berlin Wall and was really impacted by that division, and was on the front line of the Cold War, as well as various museums related to the Holocaust and World War II in Amsterdam and in Berlin. So all of these experiences I'll be able to bring back to my students and use in my curriculum in my human geography classes with ninth graders as well as my modern world history classes. The impetus of this trip in professional development was an invitation for a two-week residency at the Anne Frank Foundation in the International Department, at the Anne Frank House. Received that back in August, I mean, in April, for some work we did in the spring with a partnership that I'll describe in just a minute. So there I am in front of, being a tourist. I worked with personnel in the curriculum, international departments, education, and group visits. I reviewed curriculum material that is being used in Australia currently, was given free access to their electronic archives, so was able to pull resources together from them that I'll be able to share, I mean, not only use in my classroom, but share with teachers who participated in some workshops we did back in May. That was one of the views from the office down there on the lower right, not exactly a view that I have from my classroom every day, but that made it easy to get up and go to work in the morning. I could not help but feel the importance of the work that we were doing from my office. I could see the rear of the secret annex, so you can see that in the left-hand side, the red tile roof is where Anne Frank and her family spent seven-hundred-and-eighty-nine days in hiding with four other individuals. On the right, you know, she was everywhere in the landscape. On the right is a small statue of her outside the Vesterkirk, which is right beside the Anne Frank House, and then in the lower portion in the right-hand side, when the Franks first moved to Amsterdam, they lived in a suburb of Mervetaplane, which is south of the city. So that's a statue of Anne looking back over her shoulder. Probably very typical, I mean, that may have been the way she looked when they left their house on June sixth, nineteen forty-two, to go into hiding. Never did a return to that area. I later spent time in Frankfurt, Maine, where I met with Dr. Maren Mendel, Director of the Anne Frank Youth Center, and in Berlin, I met with Patrick Siegel, who's a project manager of the Anne Frank Center there. Both sites gave me additional insights into how we can best utilize this traveling exhibition with teachers and with students. My professional development evolved through a series of coincidences, connections, and relationships I forged over the years. Back in January, Dr. Doyle, static at the University of South Carolina in the College of Education, contacted me. He had served on my dissertation committee and knew that I had deep connections within not only the social studies community in the state, but also on a national level, and so he wanted to put together some teacher workshops and also bring this traveling exhibition, Anne Frank, a history for today. So back in, we worked and worked on this and planned two workshops for teachers that occurred the first weekend in May, and we also trained twenty-four students from TLC, Avid, and the Single Gender Program at Dent to serve as peer guide facilitators. And so that's a picture of them now. They will be able to guide students through this thirty-four panel exhibition to learn about Anne Frank and then be able to use that to talk about current day issues. So on May third and fourth, we conducted workshops for approximately thirty teachers representing areas, various areas of the state. The three scholars from the Anne Frank House worked with teachers, and the workshops were designed not only to enrich instruction about Anne Frank and the Holocaust, but also were applicable to other subject areas as well. Workshop participants, you can see here, are analyzing primary source documents, and they conducted dialogues about current human rights abuses and discussed ways to integrate the content across the curriculum. One of the participants, Barbara Harfield, seen in the middle of the picture, she's a social studies coordinator in Charleston County, and she noted that the social studies classroom is the intersection point of many different academic skills. Not only do we teach what happened, we guide students through analyzing documents and help them develop the skill of reading nonfiction text. All of this is extremely crucial in the common core. The life story of Anne Frank is a centerpiece of this exhibition. The family story reflects world events prior to, during, and after the period of Nazi dictatorship. The exhibit juxtaposes photographs of the Frank family with images of historical events at the time to show how persecuted people such as the Franks were affected by political decisions and the actions of individuals. There's also a springboard for discussing modern-day human rights abuses. I'd like to conclude by sharing with you information about the traveling exhibition. Mark Turner, who is a site coordinator at Dent, and I spent Monday morning installing the exhibition, and today, Rob Levin, back there from the Anne Frank Center in New York, was here to work additionally with our students, and we had an afternoon session with some teachers from Dent, Killian Elementary, and Blythewood High School to discuss logistics for involving the greater community, not just the students at Dent. So our plan is during the school day, teachers will be able to sign up and bring their students through this exhibition, and additionally, we will train other students from other schools to be facilitators as well. And the exhibition will also be open to the wider community. Our goal is to implement the four themes of the Anne Frank House, which you see there, information on, information and education on antisemitism, principle of equal rights, and prohibition of discrimination, awareness of positive and negative aspects of identity, and active citizenship. So to meet these goals, we're collaborating with Jewish Studies at the University, the South Carolina Dialogue Foundation, South Carolina Council for the Social Studies, and the South Carolina Council on the Holocaust. So we have several activities that we have planned, and I promise this is it. So by the opening of school next week, we will have a calendar of events ready for publication, and I hope I can count on Ken Blackstone to help us get the word out to the community. I've contacted the literary agent of Pat Conroy, South Carolina novelist, who has a connection with Anne Frank, and said, hey, would you like to come and talk a little bit? And the agent wants to know how much my budget is, which is slim to none, we're relying on in-kind donations. So I've sent her another email, laid out a plan, how much is it going to be, so I may be going around collecting cans and stuff to make that come through. Other activities that are in the works are a lecture on antisemitism by Dr. Fred Federica Clemente at University, working on putting a panel of Holocaust survivor, children of Holocaust survivors to come in and talk about their experience growing up with parents who were Holocaust survivors. We're also involving the Palmetto Center for the Arts, who will do a series of one-act plays, and hopefully tie it into, I mean, have a panel discussion on Judaism, Islam, and Christianity, and also tie in the civil rights movement fifty years on. But I'd like to conclude with this. I think that all teachers, me included, go into teaching because we think somehow we're going to change the world. And we get in there and sometimes get bounced around in the system, and so in this age of accountability and school report cards and school grades, I think it's very easy for us to lose focus of that desire to change the world. I believe that this exhibition has great potential for reshaping communities, using Anne Frank and the Holocaust as a springboard to discuss modern-day issues about sensitive topics that are still around in our communities. You know, it has great potential. Racism, income inequality, scapegoating, xenophobia, you name it, it's all here within our state. It might not be out on the front porch, wide open, but it's still out there, and sometimes unfortunately drives public policy in some arenas. So perhaps together as a community, we can be as good as Anne Frank believed all people could be. So thank you, and I'd like to, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have. I know that was longer than three minutes.
Thank you, Dr. Vaughn. Are there any questions, open up for questions? How long were you there? I just wanted to, you went pretty quick.
I was, oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm glad.
I was, I was in residency at Anne Frank Foundation for two weeks.
Okay, in Amsterdam?
In Amsterdam, yes, sir.
That's where you, that's where your center of study was? You didn't go, you were totally... You didn't go, you were totally focused on that center?
And that was the main focus of that. And then when I was planning my professional development, I thought, you know, I'm close to D-Day beaches, and so wanted to go out there and see some things that I had seen when I went to France in high school 25 years ago. In Germany, I spent a few days with former colleagues in Frankfurt, went out to Roman Ruins. So I saw a wide, you know, a thousand years' worth of history, I guess, particularly with the Bayou Tapestry. That was, you know, you left there and you're like, wow, I just saw something that's nearly 2,000 years old. So I learned a lot, and I think by traveling, it really helps me to be able to bring back personal stories to students and share that with them, because I'm seeing things that I had always seen in history text since I was a little kid.
What was your feeling when you went into that room, the stadium?
It was, it was, I guess, I don't know if surreal is the right word for it. It was the, one of the only museums that I've ever been in where it's complete silence. People, I mean, it was almost a reverence. And when I, happened, the day that I was working in the group department, they had a group of American students. And so the teacher who works in that classroom left me there to, for a few minutes, to make, she was making sure she had everything she needed, and she says, oh, here's a copy of the diary in English. So I just happened to open it up to a section where she was talking about, you know, forgiveness and realizing that the way that you behave may cause the way other, you know, reactions. She was talking particularly about the relationship with her mother, and I thought, wow, you know, that, you know, got chills thinking about that, that that was, I looked out the window in the third floor there, that's where that was written. And I think that, you know, at 15, she came to the realization that it takes people, I mean, some people don't come to that realization their whole lifetime. So it was, you know, it's just hard to imagine being in that small space with people with very strong personalities, and how can you be quiet all day long and not be able to see, particularly, or not give yourself away to neighbors who are just right out, I mean, it's back, there's, the houses on the boat, on the blocks share a back courtyard, so, you know, how did people where I was sitting in that office not notice? There are people over there. But I was told, you know, people did not ask questions at that time, very, very difficult time.
Any other questions?
Will we get ahead of time the schedule?
Yes, ma'am.
That that will be on display from, you said, June, August 19th through the 25th?
Yes, we're, we're doing like a preview next week when Dent has its Dash for Success. But we'll have a, I'm hoping to have that firm calendar nailed down. As it evolves today, it looks like it may turn into a year-long series of conversations long after the exhibition leaves, which I think is the goal of education, you want people to revisit things that they've learned in the past.
And I think that's an excellent thing for the students to be able to, to learn and see, because when I was in Berlin, talking to the people who experienced the Holocaust just brought tears to your eyes, because some of the stories that the older people could tell, tell you how they had to stay in hiding, and the same thing you're just saying. So I would love to, for the children, to get that experience. So I hope they really take advantage of it.
And as I said, we really hope that the wider community will come in, because, I mean, there are a lot of people who have children who've gone through the schools here, and now they no longer have a connection. So we really hope that they'll come back in and see the things that we're doing.
I hope so, and I hope we do a lot of advertisement and take advantage of our R2 TV, encouraging people to come out and see. Because just the experience that I had was one of those I'll never forget. I mean, I can still see one of the ladies sitting in her chair telling us the story, and it just, it's very chilling.
And I think the danger is, these, you know, people, there are not many survivors left, and, you know, the danger is that this story could be forgotten, and so it's a worthy story to continue to tell. And as I said, I think it dovetails really well with current issues. I mean, this is a story that's an easy entry, you can look at it and say, okay, well, this is an event that happened in the past, but then you say, well, you know, there's some things in our not-so-distant past that we're not really proud of, and we really need to bring closure to that. So hopefully, I mean, as I said, maybe I'm an optimist and think that this could really reshape communities, so we'll see.
I hope so, because I have a chair that I purchased when I was in Berlin, and supposedly, now, I don't know, but this is what the lady told me, that it was her family chair, that somehow she was able to save and told me to never, I could get it reupholster, but never to have the wood, the wood redone, leave it in its original shape, and all I do is polish it and leave it.
There's an exhibit for you.
My chair!
Thank you, Melinda. Pat Conroy might not be here, but your chair will. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, but I do have that chair.
I wanted to comment that it's important for young children to read the diary of Anne Frank. I know I was not aware of the Holocaust until I read that book, and then I asked my mother, and I said, is this true? Did this really happen? And she said it did.
That was my introduction.
And explained it to me. And I'm Jewish origin, so it was certainly very meaningful to me, and I didn't know about it, so.
She was my entry point to the Holocaust when I was in eighth grade, and I emailed, well, I actually wrote a postcard to my eighth-grade English teacher and said, never in a million years did I think, when I was sitting in your classroom, that one day I'd be sitting, you know, in the rear garden of the Anne Frank House. So we picked Dent, and I meant at Richardson Northeast, but it fits with the middle school curriculum.
It's important, it's important. In fact, we recommended it to one of the students we were disciplining if you were a membership.
I do remember.
And we not only wanted him to read it, but he wanted him to report back to us what he learned. So it was very instructional.
Yes.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. And I've got a little, I brought a catalog, they call it a catalogus, based on the exhibition, but I didn't want to give it out in the beginning, because you might be flipping through it like my students would, not paying attention to it.
True teacher, true teacher. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Well, that was certainly a moving presentation, and I'm looking forward to the exhibit at Dent. Okay, here's, item seven is our first public participation period. Was there anyone who signed up? No one signed up? It's open, we have a few minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board at this time? I'll give you three minutes of talking to us. No hands showed, because, so we'll go to the next item, which is old business, action requested, 8.1, approval of our revisions of policy BE, school board meetings. And this is, Dr. Washington, would you read this, refresh us on that?
Right, this is to amend the policy BE regarding time and place for board meetings to allow you the flexibility.
Just the revisions, so first reading, I mean.
For approval tonight.
We can approve tonight.
For a move.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Manning, any further discussion or questions about the policy? Hearing none, we'll ask a call for the vote.
Do you not have board docs to do by itself anymore? Do they have the system cut off, so we don't have to manually do it?
It moves, it does move down, you just have to punch it to that point. See what I'm saying?
Oh, I know you have.
Okay, thank you very much, it's, we're doing a little, we'll try to get things straight up here. Thank you very much, 7-0 vote. Next item is the approval of request to amend our charter high, the charter high school, Richardson Two Charter High School. Dr. Hamon, let you start with that.
You have in your materials the section from the charter that, with the amendment that's requested. Also in your packet, you have a letter of support from all of our current high school principals. And if there are any questions, we can answer those.
Like, Mr. Levin's here, and he can.
I have some questions. I've got some questions that I've been, I'm inquiring, and I didn't get these thoughts or conversations until after we met the last board meeting. And I was intending to send it to get the data that I need before the vote tonight, but I ran out of time. But I'm hearing from parents, and I just want to know how true this is. Let me start with number one. How are children selected? Because I'm told that the children, particularly African-American males, who are believed or perceived, I guess it's, for lack of a better word, perceived to be problem children are recommended to the charter school. Can I get some feedback on that?
Henry, would you come forward? There may be some questions, so just come to the microphone, please, and I'll get closer to mine.
I'm not sure where that information came from. We did not go out and look for any particular category of student. Our doors are open to any student that wants to apply. We will not take any student that is up for expulsion or has been expelled. We cannot set our entry requirements any different from any other public high school in the state of South Carolina. Originally, the charter school had asked it all about students that passed HSAAP and had PE. That was even struck down by the State Department. So we have the exact same entry requirements as any other high school. We had honors-level students, we had students with medical reasons, we had one or two that had had some discipline issues. We usually check with Cleave or someone like that to make sure that all these students have been cleared from by Richardson Two to attend. So I would say that our student population has no more of a discipline problem than any other high school.
Is there any particular school that sends more students, or more students come for any particular high school than the other ones?
I would think we have a pretty good balance. I might have to go back and ask. Blithwood and Ridgeview might be a little heavier than the others.
Blithwood and Ridgeview?
And I'd say that maybe two or three more students than those two than the others.
And do you have an idea, just off the top of your head, what the makeup, the racial makeup is at that school?
We had pulled it, and we did an overlay of the demographics, and it's almost exactly matching with the district.
Because of the chairman, I did not hear you. Just one second.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry, what did you say?
We did an demographic overlay on that, number of males, females, minorities, everything, it's just, it's exact match-up with the district. We're required by our charter not to vary more than 20%, and we didn't even come close to that variation.
It was like 20%?
No, that's the maximum variation we can have, but.
The maximum, okay.
Very little.
I didn't hear that part.
That's written into the charter, so.
Okay.
Your charter is set up to be, to represent the district, right?
That's what I thought, but I'm just following up so that I can intelligently respond to what I hear.
Any other questions for, about the charter school, or for Mr. Levin?
Again, you know, if we go back to the survey that we did, we had 100% satisfaction from our parents.
I know you have a lot of medical issues too, in your schools.
We did, we have several, especially of our female students, our anxiety-type things, attending large 2,000-student high schools, things of that nature.
And how long, say, if you get a student in, how long, do you have any that just do not graduate, or just drop out, or do all of the students stay?
I wish I could say that they all do, but like other high schools, we have some that drop out. We have, of course, this district being a very, fairly transit district, we have students that move on. We don't find out they've gone until they're gone. You know, they don't come withdrawal right up front or something like that, but we do the follow-up on them. We have several students that have come to our school, stay their junior year, go back to their original high school to finish up. We have students that would not be able to graduate their senior year because they need extra courses. They can come with us, and if they work hard, they can pick up an additional course or two and graduate on time.
Thank you. You answered my last question when you said they can go back and graduate from their original school.
We've been very pleased with our graduation rate, looking at the students that we have. One of the things that we do that, you know, you learn a lot by doing. One of the first things we learned, that our students have to make a change, become a more active student. When in a traditional high school, they sit in a classroom, they become more of a passive student, they follow the instructions of the teacher, the lesson plan and everything. When they come to us, they have to learn to get it on their own. Of course, we facilitate that and back them up and help them. But I think it makes them a much stronger learner. We've had several that have gone into the Army, they come back to us and say they felt like they had a head start, because they knew blackboard back and forth, and were able to, you know, pick up immediately on what the military was doing. Several of us have said the same thing about going off to college. So we've been pleased with the reaction from the parents and the students.
Okay, and I had a parent that I guess I was referring to charter school, and the question that I could not answer was the extracurricular activities. Do they have any extracurricular activities as sports or anything? Can they participate in anything like that?
That's been about a million-dollar question for the last three years. This has been battled back and forth in state legislature. And now they can attend or participate in extracurricular activities at their home school, where it's a school they're normally zoned for. So if we have a student that wants to go play football at Ridgeview, but he's zoned for Spring Valley, he would have to go to Spring Valley to play. But they are open to ROTC and sports.
And do they have a prom? That was the other question.
We had a prom, we had a prom our first year, the second and third year, the students have elected not to have a prom. Matter of fact, the school even paid for everything on the prom when we had it. But students seem to be changing as far as yearbooks and things that we always thought were almost sacred for high school, they're starting to overlook more and more of that.
Okay, so can, if, say if a student wants to go to the prom from their home school, is that permissible?
No, ma'am. They have, they can go if they have a date from that school. We get a request from that school to approve that student based on their behavior and academics and everything. We have had some of our students attend proms at the other high schools.
But that's only with an invitation?
Yes, ma'am, invitation only.
Okay, thank you. I couldn't answer those questions the other day, but now I can. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't have a question, if it's all right, I just have a comment. Is the liaison to the charter school, and I spend a good bit of time with the board and during the meetings, I'm inclined to support the request for the charter school for ninth and 10th grade. I think we've had an opportunity to talk with the school, I think they understand the weighted task that this is, because it is different for ninth and 10th grade students and is going to require extra attention and extra work. However, I do think it's the right step for the charter school to add ninth and 10th grade. The board is a hole, and the charter school is fully behind it. And because the board supports it, I believe it's the right step for us to approve it. And so I'll be supporting this amendment in its entirety.
And let me say this before we go forward. I am an advocate for the charter school. I think we have one of the best charter schools in the state. A lot of work went into getting it set up right, we have a lot of support for the kids. I'm definitely not saying the charter school is the key, the school for most students. There are students out there that have a special need or a special reason that they need to attend. We don't want to go out and recruit ninth graders. I don't want to go in and say the charter school is a better school than Ridgeview or Spring Valley, but if this student cannot be successful in a traditional high school student, I think we need to have, you know, need to be able to offer them something where they can be successful.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I support it as well, Henry. My concern is that there may be a capacity issue with bringing both ninth and 10th grade on at the same time, and I've said that before, and I still remain concerned about that. I think because of what you just said, the uniqueness of it, and particularly with ninth graders, for whom this will be their first year of high school experience, trying to make sure that they adapt and adjust well while bringing in.
make sure that they adapt and adjust well while bringing in tenth graders as well, both at the same time. The capacity to handle that, given your staffing that you currently have, concerns me greatly. And so, although I am going to support because it is being recommended, I want you to know that I'm going on record saying I'm very concerned about the ability to handle incoming freshmen and tenth graders, starting out new for the first time for your school. Question, are there any challenges that you have been experiencing with regards to faculty and staff, retaining or turnovers?
We hired a, we had one, our English teacher left this year to go to Spring Valley. We have hired another English teacher to come onboard this week. All of the other staff, we've had no turnover at all in that. I still feel, still feel very confident in the ability of all of our staff to work with all of our students. Our staff realizes that we're a small school, so each of us wear many different hats at different times of the day. So, everyone is always willing to step in, do their part, and then some.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, let me just say that I do support the charter school. At this time, I would not be supporting ninth and tenth graders. Being a former high school teacher, as well as a high school administrator, I don't think the charter school has what it needs to offer, the transition of ninth graders and tenth graders. And I truly believe, coming from a school setting and with my experience in the high schools, that they're going to fail, and I cannot go on record supporting that.
We ask you to keep in mind, these ninth and tenth graders, if they don't come to us, they're going to go to K-12, they're going to go to Provost or somewhere like that. And I think there's no comparison with our program and what they have to offer.
Do you guys need, oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Jackson, were you finished?
Did you finish, Mr. Love?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you. Is there something we can make sure is in place to assist the ninth graders as they transition from eighth grade into the ninth grade in a charter school setting? Is there additional staff that you might need to help these students to get adjusted in, in transitioning? Maybe counselors, or I'm not quite sure what the answer is. But is there anything that we can do to ensure that it's a smooth transition for the ninth graders?
One of the good things about our school is with the small number of students, we have a, one guidance counselor that's there full-time. So, instead of one guidance counselor being responsible for three hundred students, this guidance counselor will be available for a maximum of a hundred and twenty. I'm also there every day. We have evening classes for parents to come in if they want to meet with us or meet with a guidance counselor. Our parents do not have to take any time off from work to come meet with someone. And I think we have a lot of built-in support. Anne Holland is back here, works with them from day one on their career choices, things of that nature. We have Jeanne Seminow there for math. We have a plan as the numbers build up to add additional math tutors and science tutors.
Will you keep us abreast? I, I would just like to know the transition period of, how the ninth graders are transitioning?
Yes, ma'am.
And if there needs to be another guidance counselor?
Well, from my first day in this district, I worked with at-risk kids through career prep, as an assistant administrator, as assistant principal. I've always felt that was my calling, to work with these people that have not quite meshed into the system. And that's where my love still is for these kids.
Mr. Chair, I have one other question. I just, it really concerns me, and if you can answer this, what is going to be the accountability for these students? Because it's my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that they come in and they sign in, and they can leave at any time. And I guess my concern with that is safety, because parents are dropping these students off, and we're talking about fourteen and fifteen-year-old students, and they have the ability to leave at any time. So, can you assure us what's going to be the safety accountability there for fourteen and fifteen-year-olds being dropped off, parents going to work and thinking they're staying there and they're leaving with their friends and coming in? So, do you guys keep a sign-in sheet? Just, just kind of inform us of the accountability?
Well, I can no more assure the safety of that student than I could one at Spring Valley or Ridgeview. But we do watch over them, we keep up with them. If we see they're coming in, since the parents leave, they try to cut out, sign right back out, we're in immediate contact with parents. So, we've had a good relationship on handling that.
They can just sign out when they get ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so that's my fear with fourteen and fifteen-year-olds connecting with their friends from neighboring schools.
Any other questions?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that it is going to require a fine balance. The design of the charter school, part of that design is flexibility.
Right.
And there may be some of those students that flexibility is still part of what makes the program successful for them, but that needs to be closely monitored and worked with the parents to determine whether that's appropriate for each child. And, Henry, I would assume that if there are parents who don't want their children to leave, that that would be something you would discuss, and that those children would be there for whatever portion of the day the parents?
We had one this last year that mother wanted to know any time that child tried to leave, and before she would get out of the front door, mom would know, we would tell them what kind of car she got in, the whole nine yards on that. But that has not been much of a problem. We had some students who wanted to come in, work for thirty minutes, go to McDonald's for lunch. We cut all of that out. I, I make no bones about it. I tell them from day one, they're there to get their education, we're going to all work together on it, and if they don't want to be part of that, we need to look at another plan for them.
But, but Henry, I do think that Ms. Elkins does bring up a good point, and, and Mr. Jackson also touched on it. You know, ninth and tenth grade does bring different issues. I think you guys are aware of that. And I think maybe some sort of either near or midterm report on how that transition with ninth and tenth grade is going may be well received by the board to sort of back up whatever decision is made here tonight.
You requesting a semester report, or something like that?
Yes.
Like, they have any problem with that?
It's a semester report.
Yeah, semester report. Semester, you got, you got grades, you got, is that, is that how y'all work with semesters?
Well, we don't, we don't even have semesters. When our student can finish a course, in other words, ours is only two at a time. Soon as they finish that course, they have a limited amount of time to get through that course. If they finish it early, they're assigned another course to work through.
Mr. Chairman, can we just allow the district and the charter school to work out what maybe that reporting is, and just take it out of our hands? But, but I would like some sort of interval report that we haven't had, just because of the extra responsibility for this.
Maybe a quarter report, or maybe a report, if school starts in August, give us an update how things are going, particularly for the ninth and tenth graders. I'm more concerned about the ninth graders. Perhaps we can get a report around the first of November.
That could be an award, that could be an award reason.
Right, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay, do we have a motion to?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the amendment that is provided by the Richland Two Charter High School.
Mr. Chair, can I make a friendly amendment to that motion?
Go ahead. I need a second, though.
Second.
Now, you can...
I can do it. I just want to make sure that in our board packet, that particular letter is taken out and replaced by the amendment, by the revised copy with Dr. Ham. They just didn't have time to scan it. It was in our packet. Also, in the document proposed to amend, I need to have in the third paragraph, it should read, "The high school principals and Dr. Ham," and then the last sentence taken out.
Right.
Yep, I accept that.
Oh, yep, 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 yep.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll, we'll clean that language up just a little bit, get the right people in the right spot, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I hate to muddy the water anymore, but would we be willing to also amend that motion to include that the permission or authorization for ninth, tenth graders be only for one year until the board has an assessment of how it has worked before we make it a permanent decision?
I would support that.
I will support that.
Okay. That's the motion. This is a one-year agreement?
Yes, sir.
Any other motions, amendments? That's, we're all good. Hearing none, we are ready to vote on the proposal amended to the Charter High School. Thank you very much, passed, six, six one.
Thank you for your continued support on the school. Again, I think it just, the district is doing a great job of putting another option out there for our students to try.
Okay, next item, new business, no actually requested. Okay, state assessment scores and ES, ECA accountability results. Dr. Ham?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take just a couple of minutes to do a lead-in to this report, which will be made by Mr. Potts and the subsequent report that will be made by Mrs. Mallett. But even before our test scores came in, we began looking at a variety of data, previous achievement test scores, we looked at survey results, we looked at focus groups, even those that were conducted by the board, we looked at classroom observation data, we looked at demographics, and we began talking about what we needed to do as a system to begin to improve academic achievement. Because improvements happen sort of at the system level, at the department level, at the school, at the classroom, and at the student level. So, we started by looking at the student level. Based on that, we formulated four priority areas that I already shared with you at a previous meeting. Those, but the first of those areas, and probably the most important one, was learning. Knowing that change and improvement happened at the system level, we started to look at things in the system that we should change. So, one of them is to make sure we have this clarity of purpose that we communicate regularly and throughout the district. So, people know those four areas, they're talking about those four areas, and we clearly communicated that. The second one is to try to do some organizational change to align with the goals of improving student achievement. And in that area, I want to thank the board for approving the reorganization of academics. Because we did that, we're able to provide a real focus on elementary, middle, and high school, more customized, consistent, and thorough support than we've ever been able to provide before. So, I want to thank the board for that. We also created a very strategic kitchen cabinet. And just to give you a couple of examples of the strategy, we've expanded our executive staff to a kitchen cabinet that includes people that cover those areas that we think are critical to improving student achievement. So, for example, Abby Cobb, our lead social worker, is there because we know that students are impacted by poverty, they're impacted by transience, and the work of those helping professionals is essential to their success. Jeff Pott has been, Potts has been added to that group because we have to look at the data on a regular basis if we want to make improvement. We've expanded our key leaders to include a variety of people throughout the district so that we can make sure that the message is communicated to everybody who comes into contact with our students and our teachers. And instead of having a district design team, we actually will have district design teams focused on using the information that we have to improve achievement in other areas that impact student learning that have been identified as priority areas by the key leaders among the district. So, we want to make sure that we eliminate impediments of learning and that we have a system that's really aligned to improving student achievement. As a learning organization, our focus is everybody in the district is learning how to continuously improve the success of our students, that our job is to get better constantly. And then finally, we worked with academics, and we've developed a logic model that's up here, and I'm not going to go into the details of that, that may be something that we want to revisit, but we need, we know we need to continuously improve our profession and revamp what we're doing with professional learning to support the achievement of all of our students, that we need to have leadership and support, and we're beefing that up across the district. And finally, this issue of continuous quality improvement, to consistently be looking at data and looking how we can use a whole variety of information to continuously improve what we do. So, with that sort of a backdrop, the report you're going to hear tonight from Mr. Potts is additional information that we want to share with you, and that Sue Mallett and her team, as well as people in other departments, have used to sort of take what was a system focus and start, narrow it down into some other areas where we know we need to take action. So, with that, this is the first, it will be a first of series of reports that Mrs. Mallett will be making, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Potts.
Thank you, Dr. Ham, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Tonight, I'm going to share with you information about the recently released data in terms of pass results, H-SAP results, and then the new ESEA accountability waiver. First piece I want to talk about is regards to pass, and I'm going to try to get a lot of information to you in a really condensed form. But the first slide that we have up here on the board shows the gaps that exist, the two-year gaps that exist from 2012 pass to 2013 pass. And positive numbers show an improvement in terms of percentage points, percentage of students scoring met or higher. The items in red, or the, the green items are values that increased by more than two percentage points, and the items in red are the values that decreased by more than two percentage points. If you notice, a highlight for this year, grade three for the district went up by pretty large value in all grades, and we did have some areas of notice, specifically in mathematics and middle school. Those were things that I think we've noticed in previous years, the gaps that exist in two years. I also wanted to show you the difference between the Richland Two scores and the state in terms, once again, percentage of students scoring met or higher on pass. If you see, elementary school, those gaps are all pretty good, but when we start looking in middle school, specifically in the area of math, once again, we noticed that we, we're falling short in terms of what we're doing for students in middle school math. We can see those gaps. Obviously, we'd like to see more green than red, and I think we're seeing more green than red than we did last year. So, hopefully, we're turning things around. I wanted to also share with you information about H-SAP. H-SAP is an exam that students are required to pass in order to graduate, and students have to pass the ELA and the math portion of the exam. And in 2013, we had one of the highest percentages we had, I think, in the last four or five years in terms of percentage of students passing both exams, ELA and math. I received a lot of questions from people within the community and, and some of our administrators within the district about the new ESEA rating. You may remember last year that Dr. Ham and I, as well as Debbie Elmore from the School Boards Association, came in and presented a lot of information, not just on the ESEA rating, but on all of the ESEA waiver. A scenario that I'd like for all of us to look at, students in your class are set to take the final exam. Which scenario would you prefer? Seventy-five percent of the students pass the final exam, and the average grade on the final exam is a ninety? Or scenario two, ninety percent of the students pass the final exam, and the average grade on the final exam is a seventy-five? These two scenarios bring up an issue that exists in terms of us, us valuing what is more important, and that is an average score for students within a class or a percent of students passing. And for the last twelve, twelve or so years under No Child Left Behind, we've been living in the system where we value percentage of students scoring met or higher, percentage of students scoring proficient. And the new ESEA rating looks at what we value in a very different way. It looks at the average performance of students, not just in a class, but throughout the school and within subgroups. So, instead of looking at percentage of students scoring met or higher, we're looking at percentage of students, the average score that students score within a school. You may remember this, this stair-step climb chart. This was under AYP. Back in the year 2001, 2002, less than twenty percent of the students were expected to score proficient or higher on the state assessment. And every three years, that percentage would go up by twenty percent, twenty percentage points. Somewhere around the year 2007, 2008, we started to have some outcry, and I think schools realized that if we continue down this road, by the time we get to 2013, 14, when the expectation is all students will score proficient or higher, I think people realized that that wasn't going to happen, that maybe that was a great goal, but maybe that was a too lofty of a goal. We still have a system that is similar to this, where we don't go up by a certain percentage point every three years, we go up by a scale score value every year. I don't want to hit all the highlights of some of the technical differences between AYP and the ESEA rating, but as we said, instead of looking at students scoring prof- AYP and the ESEA rating, but as we said, instead of looking at students scoring proficient, we're looking at an average performance or a mean scale score performance across the school. A big difference is the subgroup sizes under AYP were as large as forty. The minimum subgroup size is now thirty, except for the graduation rate, which is only ten. Under AYP was all or nothing. If you remember, if a school missed one of those subgroup pieces for ELA or math, they would miss AYP altogether, and they were a not met school. Under the ESEA rating, there is an opportunity for schools to score partial credit. Now, instead of that met or not met value, schools are going to get a letter grade, something between an A through an F. A major difference is subgroups that exist. The ESEA rating added male and female. I do want everybody to understand that under both systems, the system looked at subgroups that were, I guess, lower performing subgroups. Free and reduced lunch, there is not a paid lunch subgroup that equates with that. LEP students, that doesn't measure non- or English proficient students as a subgroup. Students that are disabled are another subgroup that's looked at. Students that are not disabled are not a subgroup that compare. So in many cases, what happens, you can have a student who may be disabled, a student who is limited English proficient, a student who's on free and reduced lunch, that student can be counted in all those subgroups, also will be counted as an ethnic group, a gender, and in the all subgroup. So what happens in both of these systems is there is groups of students that get counted a lot more times than other students, and sometimes I think that there's an unbalance of the types of students that end up getting weighted. One last note, there is an addition of science and social studies for elementary and middle, and also for high school. As I said before, the rating continues to grow every year, the target gets larger. For elementary schools, this year, the target that they have to reach in every subject is six hundred and thirty-five. That scale score value goes up five points every year. By the time we get to the year 2017, 18, in some grade levels, a value of six sixty scale score is an exemplary score. That means the average student within a school would be expected to be exemplary on pass. That's if we get that far, obviously. The same thing is true for high school. Instead of looking at percentage of students that pass H-SAP, we're looking at an average scale score for students on H-SAP, and it increases every year as well. I want to show you an example of what it looks like to actually calculate one of these for a school. I'm going to use Killian Elementary School. As I noted earlier on the chart, the scale score that all elementary schools need to earn this year is six thirty-five, and that would be to earn full credit. So, oh, that doesn't work. Under the all subgroup, under ELA 2013, you're going to see a six fifty point six. Since the all subgroup is higher than six thirty-five, they earn one full point for that subgroup. Same thing with male, directly below that, six forty-six point seven, is higher than six thirty-five, it earns one point. I want to go down to the disabled subgroup, which is six oh five point eight. That did not meet the six thirty-five value, but is larger than the value from the previous year, larger than the scale score from the previous year. And so they can earn partial credit, even though they didn't meet the six thirty-five, they can earn partial credit by increasing from the previous year. So the way they earn partial credit is you take the difference between the two years, which is about one point six, and you essentially round it, or divide it by ten and round it. So it's approximately point two points earned for the disabled subgroup. If you look over in math, you're going to see that all those values are red. The all subgroup, six thirty-one point nine, is red. It didn't meet the objective, six thirty-five, and it dropped slightly from the previous year. Same thing with male, female, African-American, disabled, and subsidized meals. All of those didn't meet the objective, but I want you to look at what happened in 2012. In 2012, the objective wasn't six thirty-five, it was six thirty. That means Killian Elementary earned was higher than six thirty in most of those subgroups, except for disabled. So they earned full credit in 2012 for almost all those subgroups. If you look at the difference between the two years in each subgroup, it's a pretty minimal difference in terms of their math objective. You add up the total number of points divided by the number of objectives. We can do the same thing for science and social studies based upon their point system. And I'm going to move ahead to this. This chart is kind of the summary chart that shows you the number of points and objectives for each one of those tests. You'll notice on the right-hand side, percent tested in ELA and math. And since it's state law that we have to have, you know, more than ninety-five percent of the students actually test, or all students test, most of the schools earn full credit for this. But if you look in the area of ELA, Killian earned thirty point three of thirty-five points, earned zero in the area of math. And the key thing I want you to look at is the weight for ELA and math. ELA is weighted thirty-five percent, and math is weighted thirty-five percent. Those two together are seventy percent of the points that Killian would have earned. You add the total number of points together, and it's on a ninety, eighty, seventy, sixty scale. Killian Elementary isn't going to be an F this year, or has earned the F grade this year. They were a B last year. They were a B school. The reason I use Killian is that, this goes back to the initial question about what do you value more? Scale score average, or the percent scoring proficient? If you look at what Killian did in 2011, 12, to 2012, 13, in terms of the percentage of students scoring met or higher, they had an almost nine-point increase in the percentage points of students scoring met or higher in ELA, and almost three points higher in the area of math. So one of the difficult things that I think schools around the state are having with this system is they can show growth in terms of the percentage of students scoring met or higher, yet it doesn't equate to what happens in the ESEA rating. We have lots of schools around the state that are having major fluctuations in scores, and some of the reason behind is some of the growth that I've seen, I've heard schools go from F to A, and I won't go through Blythewood High School's full example, but if you look at the graduation rate in terms of Blythewood High School, the Hispanic Disabled and Free and Reduced Lunch subgroups are the ones that didn't earn points for the graduation rate. Some of the schools around the state that are moving from Fs to As are actually seeing some of their subgroups go away, because if you have less than thirty students in a subgroup, it doesn't count for the school. So while we would love to say that that is growth, in many cases, it is not actual Well, that was a lot of information.
[laughing]
Before we move to Ms. Mallette with the academic piece, do you have any questions about any of the information that I presented here?
That was a lot of information. Thank you, Mr. Potts. But it was understandable, and I think you did explain it as well as it could be explained. Is there questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman. Jeb, I appreciate what you've offered tonight, and certainly, I have no intention of shooting the messenger, but let me say real candidly, I think when you're presenting it in terms of, first, when you're presenting it in terms of percentages, it's a completely different picture than when you're presenting in terms of raw numbers or the numbers of students affected. And so, although the numbers may say one point two percent, three point four percent, when you start factoring it out in terms of the number of actual kids who have scored below average and who are performing poorly, particularly in math, it's very alarming. And I would hope that we would show both next time, and so that we have a realistic picture of what we're looking at, and not just percentages. The other issue is, I think that when you're looking at a comparison of how we are doing in awards, we just gave out a little earlier for closing the achievement gap, and we look at those same subgroups and how they're performing on our assessment instruments, it's a mixed message, and I think we need to clear that message up, though I think we're working really, really well. But I think we need to make sure that everyone is real clear on what those Palmetto Gold and Silver Awards for closing the achievement gap really mean in the context of this accountability. And I know, Mr. Chairman, probably not asking a question, I apologize, but I just wanted to share that. And then the other thing is with the ESA letter grade rating that they're giving, which is completely different than the State Department letter grade they're giving, we really are going to confuse the public in terms of what grade matters most, and what do they mean when they're not the same themselves. And so I think we need to offer some explanation of what's happening there as well. And then the final point I make is, I think what you talked about tonight is simply a precursor to what we're going to be expecting to see two years from now when Common Core Assessment kicks in, and not only in Richland II, but across the entire nation, student performance in particular areas like the ones you talked about tonight will be even more difficult to explain. So I think the more we start making it clear of the challenges we have now in terms of percentages and raw numbers, the easier it's going to be for us to begin to honestly and objectively discuss the problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Chairman.
Yes.
Additional comments? You know, I think, we said as a board, too, one of our challenges is, you know, if I'm a parent moving into the Columbia area, and I know Killian's a great school, they're doing a great job out there, but as a parent, I look at Killian as a potential place to move, and I see an F, and I look at maybe a Lexington one, or, you know, another district, and I see an A. It doesn't matter to me all the gobbledygook that went into the background, right? I mean, it's, at the end of the day, and also, and so that's one of our challenges, and I think that's what, you know, one of the issues that Mr. Jackson pointed out, is how do we communicate sort of what that is, and how do we allow parents to make informed decisions with all the different data that's out there? But also, you know, you presented the issue, would we rather have, you know, less students make a higher grade, or would we rather have more students make a lower grade? To me, that's a very fundamental problem, in that, you know, if I have more students pass, but they all pass with a seventy-five, am I happy with that? It depends. Did they get the foundational skills to move on, and does that seventy-five begin to erode a little bit each year because they didn't quite get all the foundational skills that they needed to get to that next level and have mastery? And it also depends on the perspective. Am I okay as a parent if my child is the one that's in that seventy-five percent range with the score? I would say no. Am I okay if my child is in the ninety percent range? I would say yes. So again, that's a foundational issue that we have to make sure that we're all aware of and working towards the same goals, because I do think that seventy-five can erode, you know, that one skill that they didn't get, or two skills that they didn't master, when those are key building blocks for the next thing that they need to do, does that begin to erode the scores over time? And so I just, I don't want to let that key piece kind of slide by, because as Mr. Jackson said, the percentages, you lose the individual children in that, and what that means is we build on top of, you know, slightly weaker foundation. Do you want your foundation to pass across the board seventy-five percent, or do you want it to be ninety percent and fix the area that we need to address? I don't know. So.
Questions, good comments, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I have one question, and I'm not sure who can answer this for me, but I want to know, are the schools inviting parents to come in so they can explain the grades and what it means, like you explained it to the board? Do we have something in place for that?
I know that, I've spoken to a number of principals who are doing a lot of work to bring in, and already have brought in, you know, SICs and PTOs, and have had me come speak to parents at their school in regards to what this means, and how do you explain this? How do you explain the other state rating, as Mr. Jackson mentioned? How do you explain Palmetto Silver and Palmetto Gold? And I think for a lot of them, they realize that they have to let their school and community really define what kind of school they are, and not wait until a rating system comes and defines what kind of school they are. So I've been, I've spoken with a number of principals, and I've been out to help kind of address how to make sense of some of this.
Right, but the scores just came out, so you wouldn't have spoken with those parents?
Well, we did it last year when the 2012 scores came out. So after that is when we started addressing these things with the parents and the community, yes.
Thank you.
Got the questions? I'm ready for the next part of this. Thank you, Mr. Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jeb.
Oh, you own. Dr. Hamm, who's next? I think I know.
Mrs. Mallette is next. Thank you, Dr. Hamm. As Dr. Hamm said, we have really taken a long, hard look at our systemic organization, and it takes many people, many hands, many minds to work collaboratively together to make it successful. So in your board packet, you have a focus for our improvement, a chart with ten items written across, or eight items written across, that we felt like were very, very important. So I'm not going to read that to you, but I have created a very simple, or I should say, quick slide presentation, and I'll touch on some of those things that are listed in there. Our Common Core standards and instruction is number one. Learning, as Dr. Hamm said, is key. It has always been key, but we're ramping it up. K-5 alignment documents, our folks worked very hard this summer with teachers in ELA and math to create those documents. It's still in progress. We are in the midst of working on a Common Core Curriculum Standards website for not only our parents, but also for our teachers, to have one place where all the information is located so that parents have easy access to it, and so do our teachers. Our implementation teams met twice this summer with our consultant, as well as with our folks in academics, and they are well underway. We'll be working with them throughout the year. As a matter of fact, next week, we have our consultant, Judy Carr, who will be with us next Monday and Tuesday. In K-12 mathematics, we know that math is a concern, a big concern, and specifically with the new math standards coming out. We are taking a look at offering courses, content courses, and I will say that in middle school, many of our teachers were grandfathered into middle school. They were elementary certified, but could be grandfathered in, and in some cases, they did take some additional content courses. But we're going to beef that up and give more teachers an opportunity to really go deeper and understand their mathematics content area as it relates to our Common Core. We're also going to look at the vertical alignment and course offerings that we have in math, K-12. We feel like that's something that needs to be looked into, carefully examined. What is it that we're actually doing? Are we on the right path? Are we really meeting the needs of the students? So that's those two areas. The next one, we have middle school, and you notice that's one whole area. We know for a long time, even since my being in the district for a number of years, middle school has been a real concern, and we have put together really fine three different teams for elementary, middle, and high, and so we are laser-focused on the middle school curriculum. But as we look at our test data, and as we look at our course offerings, we realize that our honors and ELA math courses need to be reexamined for rigor. We need to make sure that we are, in fact, providing the rigor, not more stuff, but more substantial understanding, giving students opportunities to really delve in and understand mathematics. And we're also going to look at the middle school schedule, maybe going back to what we used to do with teaming, where you had four or five folks who worked with a group of students throughout the year. So we're looking at those kinds of things. We know that poverty and transancy is a huge area of concern, but it is what it is, and we are really working very closely with everyone, including our wraparound services through special services, our nurses, our social workers, Dr. Vickery and her staff. We're looking at the socioeconomic data, we're looking at everything. How many times a student is sent to the nurse? How many times a student is absent? We're going to take it down to the student level so that we really know who those students are who really, truly are at risk, and as well as those who really need to be bumped up with our rigor in our honors courses. And we're continuing a partnership with Francis Marion for their Center of Excellence in teaching children of poverty, and we're excited about that. We'll offer a series of seminars, not only for our teachers, but also for our parents. So Nancy Gregory is working with Francis Marion to make that happen. Next, leadership development. That covers or crosses several of our areas. The one that Dr. Hamm alluded to is our reorganization, and let me again personally and publicly thank you for your really endorsing and accepting and allowing... thank you for your really endorsing and accepting and allowing us to reorganize. We have not reorganized in thirteen, fourteen years. We have not added new folks in that length of time, and yet we've put on or brought on at over seven schools, more magnets, that kind of thing. So having an elementary team, having a middle school team, and having a high school team really will help us, as Dr. Ham said, really focus on those areas and provide the support that they need. We've been talking to our principals, and Dr. Washington is going to reinstate her aspiring school leadership seminar series that she did several years ago. And our new principals are, some of our veteran principals have taken it upon themselves along with Dr. Washington to provide a new principal academy, and this is led by our veteran principals working with our brand-new principals. So we're excited about that. New teachers, we have one hundred and thirty-six brand-new teachers. I think a little over two hundred and fifty teachers new to Richland Two as well. We have been able to add additional support for that. We're excited that we have now a middle school math and middle school science coach who will work with not only middle school but with high school. That's Nancy Ankeny. And Mary Losstetter, as you know, will be our math. Nancy will be our science. We also have had the opportunity to hire a full-time special ed teacher to work just with our special ed teachers. We know that we lose them after, sometimes just after the first year, and now we have someone who really can work very closely with those teachers, and we're excited. I think Julie Shaheen is that person, and we're delighted. We were able to offer a six-day new-to-two that included two days that the teachers could spend with their principals at their home school, getting to know their protocol and their procedures, and have lunch with the principal and a leadership team, but also they worked with our instructional coaches on a variety of topics, and we felt like it was very, very successful. In addition to that, we are offering seminars throughout the year for our new teachers, and that's been redesigned based on their needs as well. And we know data is very, very important, and we're delighted that we are now more inclusive, I believe, because we're working closely with Jeff Potts in our academic arena to look at not only the data that we already have, but the data that's going to come in, excuse me, in the near future. But we're looking at not only the test data but the soft data, and we think that's very, very important, again, digging down to those students. Professional learning for assessment, we know that that is one area that is very difficult for our teachers. How do they, how do you know your students are successful? How do you know how to write an assessment, a formal, informal assessment to measure their growth? So we're bringing in a consultant, national consultant, Kay Burke, working with our teams of teachers, elementary, middle, and high. So we're excited about that opportunity. And then instructional technology is a critical part of what we do. You know, we're in year three of one-to-one, and they will continue our ITS school level as well as our district level. ITS folks are working closely with academics to ensure that we are integrating fully all of the things, the tools and the strategies that we need to help students be successful, particularly when they take the Smarter Balance test online. So we're excited about having that partnership as well deepened. Okay? I think, and then support, Dr. Ham alluded to customized support. We're looking at our priority schools. We know that's one thing that the board is very concerned about, so we are going to provide customized support. We're going to offer professional learning based on their needs. It's not one-size-fits-all, but it's based on what those students and those teachers need in their schools. We're going to monitor the instructional programs at these schools, what's working, what's not working, and eliminate those that are not successful and not working to help our teachers and principals out. We have school-level data teams, meetings with academics and with Jeff Potts, with the schools. We'll continue doing that this year. And then we're going to increase the collaboration between our ALUR, ESOL, and our special education teachers with our regular classroom teachers. We think that is part of the problem, is that coordination, that collaboration, those regular ed teachers understanding how the students, ESOL students learn and how our special ed students learn, and really challenging our ALUR children as well. And the final action, academics action plan, and this was not in your packet, but just to give you sort of a brief overview of what we're really going to focus on, this is just some of the highlights, it's not the complete detailed report, but basically, we're going to be looking at each school's leadership teams to review their data, continue with that. We're looking at patterns, we're looking at trends. I can't read that. We're also going to discuss their needs and resources. What do they need from us? What kind of resources do they need to assist them? We're going to develop and implement a school action plan based on their strategic plan. We think that's important, that we work with Planning Office and Will Anderson to make sure that we are following their strategic plan and making it so that it is more user-friendly, if you will, and more adaptable to what those students and those teachers need. I know that you've asked several times about walkthroughs and classroom observations. We feel very strongly that we need to collaborate together and come up with a sort of consistent format that we use so that we know what we're looking for. I think sometimes we think we know what we're looking for, but do we really? So we're working together with the elementary and middle and high school folks to recreate those. We're also going to conduct daily classroom observations with the high priority schools and provide specific feedback. What is it that those students and those teachers actually need? And then another thing that we're going to do is to administer the MAP program with Common Core aligned tests in ELA and math for all students in grades two through nine, and that's something that we have not done before. So that will give us some information that we feel like would be very helpful. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Again, a lot of information. Thank you. Now, just to tell me what your plans are for the next couple of presentations. What are you, where are we going from here? I mean...
Dr. Ham and I have talked about that, and we, I'll let Dr. Ham address that if you want to.
I think maybe a good place to start would be with middle school and some of the plans for using data. It's clearly a high priority area, and I think that would be a good place to start.
I think Mr. Manning made a point about the seventy-five percent. When you get to middle school, you hit the wall, and that's exactly what's happening to it. I mean, anybody can analyze that. You don't have to be an educator, really. Just look at the figure, something's happening there, and I think that's one of the problems we're facing. So our challenges are great, and again, even though, I'm going to quit there. Mr. Manning?
Ms. Chairman, I want to thank you guys. It's obviously well thought out, a lot of time and effort went into more than just a presentation. It's just given us the work that you're going to do for the year, and it's exciting to see this level of detail and how much work you guys have put in it into this. Very excited about the classroom walkthroughs. That's been a big topic of mine for a number of different areas, and so I'm excited, and I think that'll really help our teachers too, to know that that's kind of consistent no matter where they are or what they're doing, and help our students. Another big area of mine, and I'm sure, I'm not going to ask you to elaborate on today, but as we go forward, again, going back to the seventy-five percent idea, remediation for our students. Some schools have test retake policies, some work different than others, and I don't know that it needs to be the same across the board, but that is one of those types of things that I think leads to mastery. And so as we get sort of the evolution of this report, I would like to know what are some of the plans for remediation? You know, are we using some of our grant money, or how are we doing that, offering those extra opportunities for students to get mastery, which solves a lot of our key issues? Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Becker?
I just have two comments. Great report, but I guess my, I don't know, maybe I just have a personal problem with this. Everything you've listed on this as a focus of areas for improving achievement, what have we been doing in the last few years? To me, this is common knowledge that we should have been doing a long time ago.
Well, to answer your question, it really is, has taken us an opportunity to really look closely at what our system is all about and to review that, and I think, Debbie, Dr. Ham has been really instrumental in doing this and putting some of these things that kind of were, maybe seemed like they were on the back burner to the forefront, and so we are moving ahead.
Well, I believe we're moving ahead, and I commend Dr. Ham for taking it and going forward, but my problem is, how many students have we neglected because we didn't take it to the next level a long time ago?
That's very difficult, I think, for us to say at this point, but I can assure you, our folks, our teachers, and our administrators have been working diligently, and in many ways, we thought maybe they were, we were all working together, but what we're finding is that we need to do more collaboration. We've started doing that. We're going to continue to collaborate, not only with the elementary folks, but to articulate from elementary, middle, to high school. And I think we now have a platform, if you will, that we can go to, something that's a visual, something that's a focus, that you all can see and our principals and teachers can see where we are and where we're going.
I want to add just a little bit. We have had excellent school teachers. I mean, we are blessed with wonderful teachers, and I think our students have had great opportunities to learn. I hope two things are going to happen this year. One is that the focus that we have will let us step up those efforts in two ways. One, by focusing on things that are really important, and the second thing, I've said, it needs to be sort of like a way of taking off the plate some things that we may have done for a long time that really aren't contributing to student success. So we're focusing and putting more into certain things and maybe removing some things that we don't need to be doing. And the second thing is, I already feel, working with the people in the schools, tremendous energy. People are excited about the school year. They're already doing wonderful things, bringing their teachers back to school, and when a positive attitude is contagious, and I think the affect of our teachers and our leaders will make a huge difference in the affect and ultimate success of our students.
Ms. Chairman?
I can agree with the excitement. I agree with the excitement being back in the district, and I commend you for that. I just don't want to be sitting here next year, or even the next year, and hear, oh, well, we didn't collaborate enough. I really want that to be a strong focus, that all departments are talking to each other, because, I mean, Jeff's been around, C, you've been around, you know, why haven't there been the communication? So in other words, we fail our students.
Well, I would like to echo what Dr. Ham said. We have a wonderful group of teachers who work very hard, very diligently, and in just a minute or two, you're going to hear from our teachers who participated in the summer staff development, and they didn't get paid. They did it on their own time. So we have folks who are really anxious, who really are willing to step up, who have stepped up. We now have, I think, like I said, sort of a framework in which we can operate that's visible to everybody and not just one isolated group or another.
And I'd like to add one more comment. Any teachers sitting out here within the district, I am not attacking you, because I know how quick those tweets and everything else go off, and the rumors get out quicker than I can get out the door. That's not where I'm going with this. It's just, we lost the communication somewhere in the last few years, and I'm glad to see it starting to come back together.
And, Ms. Chairman, can I just add one thing? And I truly agree with Dr. Ham. We have excellent teachers in the district. They come in early, they stay late, and I'm looking at Rita Rayly, who's one of those great teachers, and I think providing that walkthrough and giving immediate feedback back to the teachers, I think they're going to get even better, because you can't do what you don't know you're not doing. So teachers, I applaud you, you're doing a great job, and you truly have my support. I've been there, so I understand.
Okay, can we...
Ms. Chairman, real quickly, that last slide, who was controlling that, the slides?
I think, Ms. Joe Bartman.
That last slide where you said that they would be, someone would be monitoring the classrooms, who's going to be monitoring?
Okay.
It didn't specify who was going to monitor.
I think you might be referring to the, where we are conducting classroom observations with high priority schools.
Correct. Yes. Who's going to be doing that?
Well, when I say we, our academics team, along with principals and other teachers. So it's going to be a collaborative group of folks, and we know that teachers do want feedback. They want really specific feedback, and we want to provide that for them, and it's not an evaluation. It's not that.
No, I understand. I just wanted to know who was doing it.
It's to help our team and academics, along with our school-level folks.
Okay, and let me ask one other question for the new teachers, because I noticed that we have so many, our turnover with our teachers, and I've discussed this with Mr. Garrick before, and I'm trying to close that gap on why we have so many teachers, particularly one to three years, I think was the number of years they were staying and leaving, and I'm wondering if there is something we can set, put in place, and I'm not going to say how often, but perhaps once a month or every other week, those new teachers who seem, or not even just new teachers, but any teacher that seem to need some help that they've identified that they need, we need to put something in place so that they can feel comfortable coming and saying, we need this, this is what I need. I don't feel that I'm getting it, and they don't feel that there going to be a backlash from doing that. And I don't know what that needs to be, that needs to be put in place, but have you guys thought about doing something like that so that these people can feel comfortable and stay in the education arena versus a couple of years and they're gone? Because we invest a lot of money in hiring these teachers, and then they stay one to three years and they're gone. And I know the things that they, the reasons they put on there that we see in our board brief are not all true reasons, because nobody wants to burn a bridge that they may have to come back across. So I want us to be, and I'm not going to say more friendly, because I'm not saying that we're not friendly, but I think there's another component that we're missing, and perhaps some of the teachers or new teachers or somebody can come up with that and figure out what that component is, and we can offer to these teachers so that we can retain them. Retention, you know, we get these people, they seem really excited, and then all of a sudden, something happens, and they go.
Well, I would just like to say that before the economic downturn, we had instructional coaches for every content area in addition to the elementary folks. We did not have one who was just specifically for special ed, and so now we're able to bring back these instructional coaches. I think that will be, I'm hoping you'll see a big difference in that.
I'm saying something besides instructional coaches, because sometimes, you know, there may be personalities with the coaches, so if you have a group of people who can come together and discuss openly their concerns, and not just one instructional coach is working with this set of group of people, because personalities make a difference in how well people open up and how well we can actually communicate. So I'm just wondering if there's something, that's something I'd like to ask you guys to look into, perhaps get a team of people to come up with some dialogue on how we can make this effective, particularly for retention.
Ms. Chairman, if I could make a comment, I'd like to follow up on Ms. Anderson's comment. I've spent several days this past, well, early this week and the end of last week with sort of an open door, letting anybody at the district office drop in for fifteen minutes to talk to me about issues that were on their mind, and I heard people from several departments raise exactly the same concern you had about, in terms of providing adequate support for these new teachers. We have a... We have a lot of people who are in their first year, but we know we lose teachers those first three years, as you said. So we clearly do need to put together a team and think about how we can beef up their support and make sure that they get, that they feel like they can get any kind of help that they need. And I think one of the nice things coming into this position is that a lot of people have said, I'm eager to help, tell me what I need to do, I'm on board. And I'm thinking we're going to take up some volunteers.
Well, great, great. I'm glad I'm not out on left field with my thoughts. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would hope that in the future, that we would streamline the agenda when we got topics of this importance, so we can have more time to discuss it. I feel very rushed right now. I've got a list of questions. I don't want to top the time to go through them and have the conversation, but I really think this is critically important as we go forward. And the next time you plan the agenda, if this is going to be on there, let's eliminate as many things as we can, so we can have more time to talk about this critical issue of improving student performance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And we are going to have more time.
Thank you.
Have more sessions like this. And I've been doing this a long time, like Ms. Anderson. And there's one thing I've, there's always been true in this district, in any job or any organization I've been in, it's all about leadership, from the superintendent to the schoolhouse. I'm seeing all these principals, you're good leaders, you've got good ideas, and if you don't, and you let me know if you don't feel free to do your ideas. But I mean, I don't think that's the issue. We've got to make sure we've got great leadership in the positions. And I think when we do that, a lot of the stuff you're talking about will be done and we'll get, we're moving forward. And we are going to discuss this again. This topic will be, we're not dropping, this won't be the last time. I want you to look at the vertical alignment of curriculum. I have been, I've been talking about that for as long as I've been on this board. There's no reason why a kid doing math can't just go to wherever he goes to. I mean, I know we can't offer calculus to a sixth grader, or why not? But I'm just saying, but whatever that, if we can't offer that, then that parent has a, will have a question about what we do here. Or whatever that, whatever that is, I don't know what it is. But we've got to align this thing a little bit better and I think I have my math scores. We're going to have to move on, because it's, we're running over almost two hours now. I want Ms. Gregory, I'm going to, I'm not going to squeeze you, but I just want to keep you, okay, on task and on.
Can I ask first, how many people do you have speaking tonight?
I have three groups, and they're going to be three minutes each, so they're very short.
Okay.
Right. Good evening.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they going to be presenting the same thing we read in our book?
They are going to, we have somebody that's presenting from the Project Based Learning Institute. One group is sharing about assessment, and the third group about the alignment documents. And we could, I can cut it as short as you would like.
Well, they are here, so we need to hear them.
Okay, right, right. We can, we have a short video montage that's two minutes. And we're going to start with that to show you what happened this summer. I'm going to reference the documents in your package. You already have those. And then the teachers will come and they each have three-minute presentations. So we'll spend most of the time with the teachers sharing. But thank you for the opportunity to share our summer professional learning. And so Shelley, who's started? Professional learning that you saw was with support staff, administrators and teachers. What I wanted to reference real quickly in your board packet, you have in your packet four pages of professional learning. So of course, I'm not going to read that to you. You received this in June, where we outlined everything for you, so you have descriptions of all the sessions. I did want to highlight our summer institutes that we held on June 25th and 27th, July 9th through 11th. We had over 114 sessions for administrators, teachers, support staff, and over 1,600 participants. And I did a graph for you, or you have a graph in your packet that actually shows you the breakout of that participation. And as we said, we were going to focus on Common Core. I wanted you to see what the breakout was on Common Core, with a large percentage of the sessions on Common Core, math textbook training and so on, which you can see in your packet. And the other category, I wanted you to know, that included things like CPR, crisis management, those kinds of things. So I did want to point that out to you. Very quickly, I want to move on and actually let the teachers speak. And we have several groups of teachers that are going to do very short presentations to give you snapshots of what they learned. Our first group is from Killian Elementary, and I have Courtney Rector and Emmy Powell, who attended an assessment workshop on July 9th and 10th, from formative to summative, learning all about assessment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I promised to keep it very short. We attended the Kay Burke Presentation Training, and it was phenomenal. Thank you so much for allowing her to come and share her wealth of knowledge on assessment. Her focus was formative assessment. She, I have a list of pros for formative assessment, but I'll move on to performance tasks. Specifically, we have an example of one for first grade. We both teach first grade. Performance tasks are mostly focused more on criterion-based rubrics. This requires higher, higher level thinking, which we know is so important with the new Common Core standards. It's more of a process rather than just a product. It reaches a greater variety of students and it gives them choice in their learning. So Ms. Powell does want to show.
Very quickly, I'm going to kind of give you an idea of the process that the teachers went through each during this time. And you really want to engage your students. Therefore, in the beginning of a performance task, you want to get a catchy title, a catchy questionnaire for them, so that they're really brought into it. You always, performance tasks are done towards the end, once the students, you have taught them everything. And this lets you know, where maybe did I go wrong? Maybe where do I need to get back and focus on a little bit more? But it doesn't, it's not a paper pencil thing. It's that kids aren't at that point anymore. So we basically, we did a fairy tale mix-up, where the students had to identify character, setting and sequence of events. And they went from there. We've got a very quick, catchy title. Students are given the, their, sorry, they're given their task. And from there, they are given a variety of ways to show what they have learned based on that task. In kindergarten, or first grade, we also have workstations that reinforce what we've been teaching throughout this, this time. And then after that, this also helps reinforce this, and students are then allowed to show what they've learned. In this one, for example, we did a questionnaire, they're writing, a drawing of a poster, or an actual interview process, where they talk to us about it and share with us based on questions we have for them. And then we take from what we've learned from these performance tasks that they've given us, and we reevaluate where the students are, who do we need to do a little bit more DI for? And then also, if we've done what we need to do and can we move on? So that's kind of a nutshell example of a performance task. Any questions?
And how is that different than the way you've been, you would have been doing it last year?
For me, it's not different, but for other teachers, it may be a longer process and it may require more hands-on work for a teacher. It does take a lot of thinking. This was just three days' worth, and it was not completed in the three days, and we went from 8:30 to 3:30. But the good thing is, with the rubric and the checklist that students will get, what teachers have created it, they can apply it to other performance tasks. But also, it makes the kids responsible, so, and the parents and the teacher. And using those rubrics as they go along, they're allowed, you can see, okay, let me stop this kid before it gets way out of hand and they're totally confused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you were struggling with the creation of a rubric, who would you contact to help?
A variety. We did this as a group, usually at Killian, we do it as grade levels, so it's not just one or two people, it's a group of people. If I did have problems, curriculum coordinator, Ms. Nancy Diggs, with us. If not, other teachers at other schools would be another opportunity. And then administrators, anybody that can assist with us. I'm not the best at making them, I'll admit that, so any help would be wonderful.
Do you have the time to reach out to people?
Yes, sir. We did this in advance, this is actually, we're going to use this one. And we've communicated with people, for example, Ms. Diggs, on exactly what we wanted with it and how we could tweak it to best meet it. It also is a process. We may realize, oh, we shouldn't have put this in for this one, and when we reuse it again, we can say, let's tweak it. Students also, students sometimes come up with great ideas teachers, ourselves, don't always think about. So, anything?
What are you assessing here?
In this particular?
I mean, yeah, what are you assessing?
We, in this particular one, could the students identify their character of a chosen fairy tale? Our standard is identifying a character setting and sequence of events. In this particular one, they have to identify the character of their chosen fairy tale. For example, Little Red Riding Hood.
The comprehension, but they've, okay, that's all.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, yeah.
I mean, I understand, I could read all the words, I just couldn't understand what you were trying to get the kids to.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Emmy and Courtney. So what they worked on, they unpacked standards, they worked on performance tasks with the matching checklist or the congruent checklist and rubrics for the rigor, which was great preparation for smarter balance. Our next group is from the Center for Knowledge. We have Lisa Leitner, Melissa Hawkins, Sally Dunbar, and they're going to share what they learned in the Project Based Learning Institute in July.
I'm Melissa Hawkins, and Jo Lane encouraged us in May to start thinking about project based learning and to learn about that. And she offered us four opportunities. And so we were very grateful to the district for having this wonderful workshop in July for us to attend. And the three of us worked together. I teach second grade and they teach first grade. And so we came up with a project together. And we had to really, you know, we had to really look at what we could do together, because we wanted to collaborate with our grade levels at both schools. And so we came up with the importance of pollinators and looking at life cycles and habitats, and that was something that we could work on together, since those are standards that we teach. But, you know, it was very, the great thing about this, when we went for the first time to tell us what project based learning was, the presenter started talking about immigration. And that's one of the big units that we do in second grade with our HERSH curriculum. And as I listened to her talk, I thought, we do that? My children did that all year, all during the unit. And I was just so impressed, and this was something that we were already doing. We laugh and say Jo Lane is such a visionary, and she is. And so we felt very comfortable sitting down and doing this together. The great thing that we learned was, we learned so much from our, all the people that we were working with, middle school and all the different elementary schools, and getting feedback. And we just thought, it was a wonderful example to start something a little bit different, that the focus was totally different than what we did with our tier work, but it was similar and it had some similarities, which was great. That's my minute.
Hi, I'm Lisa Leitner, and I've been in the district for a very long time, 31 years. And I have always been a first grade teacher who has really known my state standards and my Common Core standards. Now I'm moving to CFK, and I've got to also learn the core knowledge. So when Dr. Hall called and said, I'd like for you to take this opportunity to go to the PL conference, I said, great. Not only did it give me the opportunity as a teacher, a veteran teacher, to go and work with my peers, who I had not had the opportunity to do, but I also got to see the meshing of the Common Core and the Core standards. So that, that gave me two days of working with these two great teachers. I could take what I knew, incorporate what they knew, we meshed it together and came up with an activity, with a project that will go across the grade levels. And I feel very confident and I'm very pleased that I had a part in it. And I'm not even there yet, I don't even have my children yet. So collaboration, and I've heard this throughout the whole night, but collaboration was so important. And I just appreciate that opportunity that I had, after 31 years, to come, learn something new and come out excited. And I can't wait till school starts because of it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Sally Dunbar, and between the three of us, we figured we had 100 years of experience. We've been around a while. Ms. Spector mentioned collaboration, and that's what we had an opportunity to do, but that's also what we're going to expect our students to do, and to collaborate multiple tasks across the standards. Even down as low as kindergarten and through second grade, we do that at Center for Knowledge, and I'm sure that across the district, we're going to be seeing a lot more hands-on. It gives a child chance to research and utilize technology and other resources to develop a product that is going to prepare our students for the 21st century workforce. Because as businesses and industries have projects and products that they do, they're not in isolation. So they're bouncing ideas across each other with an end result in mind, to answer our essential question, which for this was, how do pollinators impact the habitats and life cycles? So it's as simple as kindergartners, as through high school, we were able to see a lot of high school projects. And it was an experience that we're excited about taking back. So thank you very much for that opportunity. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Great job, ladies. Thank you. And our last group, I want to introduce Ale Shawn. Ale Shawn is our elementary literacy coach, and she worked with the team of second grade teams, well, actually, she worked with teams of teachers this summer on Common Core alignment documents, and she's going to talk to you about that work.
We are very excited to talk to you about this tonight. I'm going to be very brief, but this was in the plan that Carol Sample and I spoke with you about in May, that as far as our Common Core alignment, our professional development for our teachers to ensure that they are ready and that they're going to get their kids ready with the Common Core standards. So in May, we, Carol Sample and I, my partner, who you've met before, but you'll hear from her in just a minute, we worked really hard to ensure that these teams of teachers, we had teams on every grade level, and they're teams from across the district. We really looked at the four corners of the district to make sure that we had diversity on our teams, from experience to the school populations they served. And these teams worked two days in May. We were very appreciative that we could provide substitutes to take these teachers out of the classrooms for two days. They have worked all summer without pay. We gave them chocolate and water. That's what they paid, okay? So, and they're still working. You have a copy of the second grade alignment document for ELA, and I believe you have a copy of the math. They are still in draft form, and I'm going to be very honest with you, they'll probably be in draft form all year. Because as we present these to more teachers on August 16th, on Friday, we're going to tell the teachers they will be online for them. We're not providing paper copies, because we want their input and these are working documents. So as a great mini lesson comes about, we want to add it. If there's a great resource, we want to add it. But I have the group of teachers, and since they've been here since seven, I just want them to stand for a minute. And then I have two second grade teachers that I'd like just to share their experience very quickly, okay? So the second grade teachers for the ELA group, Raquel Jones from Killian. Raquel Jones from Killian. Mary Matt Guler from North Springs, I knew it, it's just late. Arida Rayly from Pontiac. And then I'm going to ask Renee McCray from Catawba to speak with you. And Shelley Mann from Lonnie B. Nelson. Liz Baggett was here from Sandlapper, but she's a mama and her little girl starts school tomorrow, so we sent her home at eight thirty. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Renee McCray, and, um, we had a great, great experience working on the ELA alignment document. Um, the team consisted of teachers across the district, um, teachers that had a few years of experience and teachers that had twenty-plus years' experience. As a team, we felt like it was important to include, um, the best practices that veteran teachers bring to the table, as well as the new ideas that beginning teachers bring. And we had such a good time working together. From the time that we were pulled out of our classrooms in May to come together, it was like we had already known each other. We had a great, um, working relationship. We collaborated well. We had set our agenda. We split off into teams and we really got the, um, we got the alignment document written. Um, we continued to work this summer like Alesh said and, um, created something that we're really, really proud of. We feel like it'll be something that all the second grade teachers across the district will use and therefore there will be some consistency throughout. Um, as Alesh said, it is a draft form. We created the framework for it and we feel like it's a really good framework. Um, but as the year goes on, teachers across the district will input and add resources as time goes on.
My name is Shelley Mann, and I teach it, uh, second grade at Lonnie B. Nelson. Um, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the document itself. Um, we started with the standards, the Common Core standards, and that really drove everything else that we did. Um, we put in benchmark assessments throughout each section of the document. We incorporated technology with our Chromebooks that we have and our iPads and websites. Um, there's a lot of choice in the document. So if a teacher has a really great text that she wants to use and it's not listed, um, there's plenty of opportunity for that. There's, um, weeks added on for project-based learning that we've kind of collaborated on and asked other teachers to share ideas with. Um, and I think that this is going to give us that consistency. I'm really excited about it. I had a great time working, um, with my new friends that I didn't know before on it. Um, and I, I'm just excited because in one of our professional developments, we had a first-year teacher. And, um, i- if I would have something like this when I started, it would have been much, much easier. Um, I wouldn't have felt the way that I felt my first year in this district. And it, it's like that, you know, we have done these documents up to fifth grade. Um, so I'm excited about it and I think it's wonderful. And it's going to help us as we grow and, and move forward in the district for all of our assessments and everything. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions?
Thank you, Shelley and Renee. Um, just very quickly, I'd like to have the second grade team sta, stand the math team because you have their document. They're not going to present, but I'd like to recognize them because they did stay and they are here tonight. Uh, first, the math coach, which is Carol Sample. And, uh, we'll ask any of the members of her team to stand that are still here. Terry Stone from Round Top. Miranda Perkins from Conder. Linda Phipps from Catawba Trail. Megan Burton from Windsor. Christina Harris from Bridge Creek. Maggie Enman from Bookman. And Cindy Heron from Nelson. Thank you, ladies. Thank you for your time tonight because we really wanted you to see their enthusiasm. We chose these three activities because we felt like they really tied in to our implementation of Common Core. And these folks are to be applauded for their commitment to their own professional growth during the summer. So we are really grateful for the wonderful teachers that we have. And what I want to close with just very quickly is the team leaders have something for you. On August the sixteenth, we will be having district in-service. Uh, we would love to invite you to come join us, and they are going to pass out session guides for you so you can see what kind of activities we planned for our teachers on August the sixteenth. They have them? Oh, yes. You passed them out? I didn't realize you already had them. So anyway, please join us. We're glad that you have those. And do you have any questions for me?
Versus for?
One quick question. How many, um, teachers did you say participated, um, worked without pay?
Um, everybody on that list that you have for summer professional learning, correct, Ms. Mallett?
That's correct.
That long list that you have, four pages long.
Yeah.
So they are, have, they are very committed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we appreciate your continued support.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great report. Okay, now we're going to our agenda items for our next board meeting, which will be at Sandlapper.
The, uh, first item on the list is a student learning report. We'll have a report, um, on professional development activities, and this time with more perspective on students. The twenty thirteen fourteen back-to-school report, a report on the use of choice options and a proposed policy revision to Policy BD, which is the organization of the school board.
Future, uh, items for the, uh, for our, for our board meetings, anything that you want to present now? Okay, hearing none. Our, this is our second time of public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time? Raise your hand and come forward. Yes, sir. I want you to state, you just state your name, uh, you know, generally.
My name's Wayne Evans, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, Mr. Chairman, to address the board in reference to one of the items coming up for voting?
If it's about...
Student appeal transfer request?
Um, Mr.?
Evans?
Okay. Um, as long as you, did you take two minutes? You take a minute, yeah, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to address the board, and I, I know all of the, uh, items have been presented to you all, is my understanding, for your review in reference to the student transfer request. And I would just, uh, again, like to let you know that, you know, I'm here if you have questions for me or of me. Um, I take it very seriously, the request, and I just wish that, uh, I, I think with the special circumstances surrounding this particular request, um, that, uh, I would like you to look inside yourselves for when it's time to take that vote. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. I know, I remember your statements. Thank you. Okay. All right, um, board super tip, tip in the comments, I'm going to start. Ms. Anderson?
Uh, I just want to say that I appreciate all the reports we received tonight. I'm just thrilled, uh, with the enthusiasm that the teachers are displaying. I think this is a new day in District Two that was long coming. And I'm just really proud that, um, they all seem so excited and happy. And I just want to thank everybody and, Bob, before you go, find some money to help out these folks that work for no money. Do the magic wand and come up with something.
We'll see what you can do, Ms. Anderson.
All right. That's why I want to know how many of it was, because I think it's, it, it shows that we need to show our appreciation. And, um, I think all this staff development was held within the district, and I know you did have some people to come in, but it's a lot cheaper than, uh, staff development has been in the past. So I just appreciate not only those teachers who spoke, but I appreciate everyone in the district and for all of your hard work, coming together, supporting Dr. Hamm. And let's make District Two the district that we know that we can be. Thank you. And I did not, I was looking for something that Barbara asked me for, but on the agenda item for next time, and it doesn't have to be the next board meeting, but whenever, I'd like to add, uh, Karen Cooper-Haver. She went to London and represented District Two, uh, with her own expenses, um, on intervention in the district. And she got some great information and really made District Two shine. So if we could have her to do a brief synopsis of what she learned in London for that. Hi?
I made a note of it.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Specter?
I just want to echo what, um, Melinda said as well. Uh, the reports were great tonight and, um, enthusiasm throughout the district. I've heard nothing but positive feedback. Everybody seems to be so happy, ready, geared, and ready to go. Um, I just want to wish everybody a great start for the new year. We're here if you need us, and...
Okay, Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate Dr. Miley. Welcome. Certainly wish you the very best as you, uh, come on board, working with our, uh, tremendous district and, uh, and the efforts that have been, and the efforts that have been put in place by Mr. Davis over the many, many years to keep us at an exemplary level. And I'm certain that you will do no less than that. So welcome, welcome to you there. Also want to welcome back, um, all the principals and teachers who were here tonight, and certainly I look forward to the opportunity to meet and greet the new principals that are coming into, into their roles for the first time and, and what they are going to be faced with in terms of challenges. I agree with Ms. Sanders, and the reports were outstanding. Um, I think that that's one step. I think the next step is making sure that we take a serious look at soft and hard data as we make determinations and decisions regarding, uh, what things are going to be implemented and what things, as Dr. Hamm had said, are going to be put to the side to ensure that the academic success of all students. Thank you, Mr. Potts, for the report. As I said, I certainly was not going to shoot the messenger, but I, in order for us to have a very serious conversation, in-depth conversation, a realistic conversation, we really need to look at it in its totality. Uh, I think percentages are wonderful, but, uh, and percentages have changed from the year before, wonderful also. But if you don't know what the change, what the numbers were last year, the percentage has changed this year. Didn't really, I think, uh, work in terms of making sure that we're talking about how many kids are being affected. How many third graders, how many sixth graders this year did not pass, passed and, and met, and came below the average. Uh, and, and then begin to address the issues, uh, that, that are associated with that raw number, uh, so that we know, uh, the total sum of what we're, what we're dealing with. But I sort of want to thank you, Dr. Hamm, for your willingness and your, your courage to, uh, hit these issues head-on. I appreciate that very, very much. I have a tremendous amount of respect for, uh, for you, as you know, and the work that you have already committed to doing. And I certainly want to, uh, publicly continue to support you in, in, in those efforts. Uh, last comment I would make, and that is that I certainly want us to continue to, uh, remember our students as they come back to school this year because the challenges that they face, uh, during the summer can adversely affect their, uh, readjustment and reacclimation back, back into our schools. And certainly, I certainly hope that teachers and principals and parents and administrators will all, um, come together to make sure that all of those issues that, um, impede progress and success are addressed. I think the whole idea, the notion behind, um, project-based learning is a good one, but in my opinion, is predicated on a foundational level, uh, that's not necessarily true for all of our students. And I think that everyone in here, uh, who, who looks at the data knows that that's true. There are so many of our students, for whatever reasons, and certainly, um, and there are multiple reasons, uh, that they are not at that foundational level that will enable them to be successful. And so ratcheting up the, the, the ante for them, uh, is a challenge that we need to make sure that we are providing the fundamental skills and building blocks that will enable them to, uh, be successful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Brown?
Um, it's hard to follow, Mr. Jackson. Um, appreciated your comments. Um, it's a great meeting, a lot of wonderful information, and appreciate everyone's enthusiasm. Um, appreciate Mr. Potts explaining all the data. Um, Mrs. Mallett with your detailed presentation, it was excellent. And certainly Nancy Gregory and the teachers, it was fabulous and much appreciated by me. Um, congratulations to Dr. Miley. Um, I remember you when I was on county council and your presentations were awesome and made a big difference in a lot of our decisions. So I'm sure you will continue to do the same. Welcome aboard. Um, congratulations to the schools, palmetto gold and silver. Um, I know you've worked hard for that recognition, and we're certainly well aware of the effort that it takes, and we're certainly very, very proud. You make us all proud. Um, and I want to thank Dr. Vaughn, social studies teacher from Richland Northeast. I thought his experience and his presentation was outstanding. And it just shows you how much there is that we need to learn and we need to know about the world that we live in. And, um, I hope all middle school children will have an opportunity to have the exposure to the information which he presented. So it's an exciting new year. I'm excited and, um, look forward to supporting you and helping you in any way that we can. Thank you.
Shal, Albert Shalston?
First, I want to thank the teachers who presented today, and especially want to thank you for giving up your free time because we know you do that all the time. So we really appreciate that. And then second, on Sunday, August eleventh, I was a sponsor along with the McKeechan, um, Foundation and Richland One, where we host a high school pep rally for Don't Text and Drive. And just want to say thank you to those parents that came out from Richland District Two and the students. We had almost five hundred attendees there, and over two hundred students signed the pledge that they will not text and drive. So I'm so excited about that. And I look forward to sponsoring that again next year. Um, the next thing, I'd like to wish all faculty, staff, and students a blessed and super school year.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, uh, echo all of my fellow board members' comments. And Dr. Miley, we'll see you next year. Remember, you asked for it, so that's what my wife reminds me of all the time. Uh, but welcome aboard. We look forward to having you. Uh, certainly all the teachers, and I want to remember also our support staff, um, as we go into the year. It takes just a whole lot of people to make this thing work, and, uh, parents and everybody else. Um, Henry and, uh, and Audrey with the Charter School, um, that it's been something you guys have been looking forward to for a couple of years now, and we finally made it happen with ninth and tenth grade. And, um, so this is the, the time to shine and, uh, and, and move forward in a good direction there. Um, also, I want to, um, put in a, a little plug. I met with one of our teachers today, Jonathan Mayshat, works out at Spring Valley High School. Uh, Jonathan has authored a book called Aliaga. And, uh, actually, um, Walmart, he, he's in a contest right now. Uh, potentially Walmart will pick his book up and put it on the shelf. And, uh, so I'm, uh, appreciate Jonathan's good work and, uh, a, a book about character and about, uh, healthy lifestyles. He actually made the name Aliaga up and gave it a meaning of health of body and mind. And, uh, so, um, ju- just another sign of the amazing talent that we have in this district. Um, and he's, uh, certainly relaying the skills that he has personally to the, the students out at Spring Valley in the Digital Arts Program. Um, Dr. Hamm, um, I think the one word that's come back to me over and over again is the word joy that you talked about and that four squares that you brought to us. And, uh, I just cannot say how many times that has been echoed back to me and other colleagues that, uh, that there is joy. And, and I think that that is just translated into this excitement. Um, I don't think we've had this much clapping unless there's some kind of angry mob, uh, usually in the crowd, um, and excitement for positive things going on in the district. So thank you for your, uh, efforts and, uh, looking forward to a great school year.
Dr. Hamm?
Well, the hour is late, so, uh, and a lot has already been said. I'm going to be short and sweet here. I do want to express my best wishes to everyone for an incredible school year. Our teachers never really left, but our students are coming back on the twenty-first. It's going to be great to see our students and teachers together in those classrooms and our halls and schools busy with the excitement of learning. So I wish everybody well, and it is going to be an awesome school year.
That's great. Um, very short, uh, Dr. Miley, welcome aboard. We're, we're, I'm excited to have you here. I know your wealth of knowledge will, um, will just fit hand in glove with Mr. Davis' tenure here for sixteen years, and we're going to really miss you too. I can, you've been here with me the whole time, and it's been great, um, to have your knowledge. Um, uh, also, Dr. Vaughn, I just, I don't know if he's here or not, but, uh, what a great presentation. History is something that has always been an interest of mine because we forget it so soon, so easy, don't we? We can't remember. We can't feel it, so we don't remember. So, and he'll, he's going to help his students remember some things, and I, I feel proud of him for that. Um, and support staff. Jack, I want this to be the third straight year that I haven't gotten a call on the first day about a bad bus situation. I said, three years since I've had a call, and I, let's, let's make it four, okay? So I'm looking forward to school start. I, I'll tell you, it's about the time I got a call, at six o'clock in the morning, but, uh, we'll do that later. later. But it's a lot of excitement going on. Let's keep it up. We've got a whole year. We've got these kids that we've got to teach, and they'll, and they'll respond. They'll respond. Okay, do we hear a motion to go in executive session?
Second it.
We've got to read the motion.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that we...
Hold on a second, let me get you.
Barbara had me tied up. I move that we go into a recess public session and convene into executive session for the purpose of a discussion of student expulsion, student appeals, student readmission requests, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, ratification of personnel, personnel matters, legal matters, and contractual matters.
Is this second? Or is anybody leaving, everybody leaving us? Is this your second?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
We'll hang around.
Okay, vote on your...
I was supposed to stay up. No, I thought I was supposed to stay up.
You're going to have to vote for Ms. Anderson.